Friday, October twenty-sixth, ten AM. Called order, trustee Snoblen.
Here.
Trustee Grum.
Here.
Trustee Rogers here. Also in attendance, Deputy Chief Mike.
Pacosta.
Got it? And Chief Seber. Treasurer's not here. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, consideration of the minutes of the regular board meeting of Rockland Fire Protection District Board of Trustees, October eighth. Special meetings on August twenty-first, twenty-third, thirtieth, and September eighteenth. Are there any changes, amendments, or adjustments to the meetings as sent out?
Did you say thirtieth?
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first.
Are there any changes, amendments, or corrections? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Okay. One down. Let's follow those. Okay, public comment. Three minutes for anybody who doesn't even say. You may have anything to say.
Doesn't matter, so I don't question.
Do you?
Go by.
Oh, okay, yeah.
The T-shirts upstairs?
Yeah.
That said, like, teacher sweatshirts, jackets that say Knollwood?
Mm-hmm.
Is that, are we talking about that under number ten? Cause...
What do you, what do you got? I'm sorry, what about them?
Are we gonna take?
Imagine this going the auction. No, they were bought by the district.
All the Knollwood shirts and...
Okay. Treasurer's report.
No, nothing to report.
Okay. Treasurer's report. Okay, I will take a stab at this, it's been a while. Bank accounts. In checking account, we have thirty-six thousand, four fifteen forty-three. Excuse me, capital. I'm sorry. I apologize, let me turn the volume down so we can get it better. Capital account, four hundred and thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars and ninety-two cents. Reserve, two hundred and seventy-four thousand, one eighty-three twenty-eight. And petty cash, twenty-nine oh five. Grand total, seven four two four six eight six eight. Budget tracking. Not much to report on the budget tracking, cause we have a new budget that we've, we're gonna pass in another week. So, I don't really have any much for the budget tracking. May I have a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
So moved. I'll second.
Motion by Grum, second by Snoblen, roll call vote. Trustee Grum.
Aye.
Trustee Snoblen.
Aye.
Trustee Rogers, aye. Approval of outstanding invoices. To those. There we go. Let's see, I don't think anything jumps out here. Finishing up staffing and wages. There was some training for firefighter. The city card, I don't think we should see much more active on the city card. Has anybody received both of those back? Didn't we have two? You had one, didn't you, Carl?
I have one, I still have it.
Okay.
And I, the other one, I believe, I believe I have custody of it, in fact.
Okay, no, it's fine, that's good. As long as you got it.
It was made out to Deputy Chief Kozinski back in the day.
Right.
They never changed the name. Yes, I do have.
Okay, so we shouldn't hear any more from that. ComEd Group, American Gas, Alarm System, Otters and Brits, Public Risk. Have we spoken to Public Risk folks about changing our...
Yeah, I talked to, actually, I went through our agent, I talked to him last week, just to let him know what the status was.
Okay.
That there would be no renewal of the work miss comp, and that as of October first, all employees were terminated.
Mm-hmm.
And that we would also need to redo the automobile liability and all that insurance too, once we got a little bit better handle on that.
Okay.
That's all, should be taken care of.
Right. Steiner Electric. I don't know what that is. Says building operations.
Lights, maybe?
Steiner Electric, that's the, it's a generator.
They did some work on the generator.
Oh, did they, really?
Well, I believe, there was a bill that was paid.
Okay, cause that's why, we're having issues with it, it's throwing up an error. So, all right, well, if they did the work, then we're good with that. Fleet Services, that should be about the end of the apparatus fuel. And Impact Networking is the copier, correct?
Yes, as I said, the copier is, we do own that, but we have a service contract. Service contract on it. That includes the consumables. And it's a hundred and thirty-five dollars a quarter, so again, that's something that, once we know what we're doing.
What we're doing.
Did you say that one could be moved to upstairs?
Yes.
And replace that other, that little one that keeps jamming at us?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Great, good.
Yeah.
Okay, so, make a motion to accept...
Actually, I, there's one thing I wanted to...
Whoa, go ahead, sorry.
To take a look at. And that is, with Otters and Brits, it's eighty-five hundred dollars, that's quite a lot. Good, and our retainers, like, seven hundred dollars a month. And I understand that some of that expense would be due to dealing with the contract and all that, but...
Court actions.
Yeah, see, that, but that raises a point, that, so, you're engaged in representing the district in a court action, and it's never been discussed in an open meeting, never been discussed in executive session, so there is no authorization whatsoever from this board to actually do anything about this. And I think that needs to be addressed.
We're appointed as legal counsel, the district was named as a defendant, it's our responsibility to respond.
I mean, this board has never discussed that lawsuit.
You've paid, well, may not, I mean, what do you want to talk about?
I'd like to know, first of all, was there any reason why the, you know, why the district decided to pursue it?
We're the defendant, we have no choice.
Up to, up to a point, but again, it just, it just strikes me that, that, that the, when you say, the rule of law's not being followed here, and that action by, action by this district is being taken that the board has never even considered.
You've approved payment of bills before. So, that's not totally true, Carl.
But I, again, I think, you know, I certainly have never gotten an update from you on any legal action of what's going on.
That's because we still don't have a final complaint filed. How can I respond to something that doesn't exist?
But it just, there's just been no discussion of this whatsoever, and that just feels like it's, it's really wrong. I mean, we're actively engaged in this, and yet, everyone acts like it's not happening. So, don't you see, you know, I, I think that we should at least, you know, sit down and discuss it at some point in time.
If, if you wanted to discuss it, you know, we can go into closed session and discuss it here, cause it's current litigation, you know? If you'd rather schedule it, you know, for next week, you know?
I would certainly like to have an update on, you know, on what, on what's going on.
You're gonna put on next, next Friday's agenda, executive session, discuss legal action? Would that be acceptable?
Yeah.
Like I said, here's the process.
Process is important here. Process is really important.
But I mean, I, I, I could tell you right now, we, we were in court yesterday. Timothy Johnston, the attorney for the petitioners, motion to withdraw from representation was approved by Judge McCulley. They have twenty-one days by law to find an alternative legal counsel. So that's November fifteenth, by close of business. Mr. Spaff filed a petition to intervene, the hearing for which was set for December thirteenth at nine AM. You know, he's gotta get some forms out to everybody. But, you know, until we find out if they're gonna pursue it, or if there's another attorney being involved, or if we're dealing with the first one, which they wanted to amend, and in fact, twice asked permission in the court to amend, and never filed an amended thing, I have nothing to wor, I have, I have nothing to work with.
By the way, I have first time on hearing this, so, I mean, it isn't like he is telling me and not telling you, so, I'm listening, I'm listening attentively too.
It's important that the board be kept up to date on the status.
Well, my... That's fine, and if you wanna go into executive session, do it, that's fine. No, no, that's fine, I'm agreeing with you.
No, no, I'm just saying that, that seems, if that, I mean, if that's it, I don't see the necessity to go into closed session. Unless you wanna give us some advice on this.
If, if there was, if there was something that I thought the board, you know, like a strategic decision, you know, I'd absolutely come to board, cause it's not my point in sight. All we're doing is reacting at this point.
No, I just, you know, the point really was just, I've heard just nothing but a resounding silence, and I know something's going on, I'd just like to be kept up to date on it.
Well, I mean...
Well, again, do you wanna, do you wanna prepare something to go up to, to bring everybody up to date on? I mean, I, I don't have a lot, I can't tell you a lot either, and that's not a slap at you, I just assumed there wasn't that much to talk about, so I haven't really concerned myself too with it.
It's procedural. It's all procedural. But, but I mean, if you want, we could just add a line item right after attorney update, put a, you know, update on, update on litigation.
Could you give us for the board, and maybe...
A written summary?
No, 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 I was gonna say, I, I have not opened the invoices that are upstairs, so I, that have come in. I mean, I've not looked at them detail-wise. What I'm asking is, can you give us a breakdown, kind of, of the, the dollar amount breakdown of what went to this, or what to the legal evidence, what went to document, you know, I mean, so where the money's being spent on it?
I mean, that would all be in, you know, that would be in, okay.
Well, I'm just asking for Carl's clarification, is that, is that kinda what you wanna know too?
Well, again, that would be good information, see, you know, what was, you know, on, on, the expense of putting together the contract, the expense of, of the lawsuit, you know, obviously you haven't been keeping track, the expense of the FOIAs, you know, just to have it categorized. I guess it would just be good information.
And, you know, I, what I'll do, cause that, that's already included in your, you get two statements, you get one for the retainers, and one for the general account, they'll all, they'll all be in the general account, and what I could do is ask them to reprint them, and I'll email them.
Well, why don't you reprint them, get them to us, and at the next meeting, why don't we do a, a small segment on the, on the agenda to go through them with us, in public, for everybody to see. Is, are you all right with that? You all right with that?
That's good.
Okay?
Okay.
Okay. That's fine, anything else before I make a motion?
Nope.
Bob, anything before we close this up?
No.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, that's what I'm gonna add, in addition to. So, the, the motion would be to approve the outstanding invoices for forty thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents, with an addition of one thousand and twenty-five dollars to Steiner Power Service for a yearly maintenance contract for the generator.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Grum, second by Snoblen, roll call vote. Trustee Snoblen?
Aye.
Trustee Grum?
Aye.
Trustee Rogers, aye. Okay. That is done, and I will get ahold of them and let them know. Okay, Brian, you have these declarations ready, correct?
The what?
Oh, the...
The resolution?
Resolution.
Yeah, I've got resolution.
Right, no, I've got, I've got mine here, I'm just saying, you wanna walk through them?
Well, do you want to do that?
Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped over, I...
You skipped something.
I kept script a few things. Chief Seber and Deputy Chief Pata...
Pacosta.
Pacosta. I'll get it, it'll take time.
It's all good.
Pacosta.
It's been slaughtered a lot of times.
Is it, okay. Good morning, gentlemen, what have you got for us? Anything new and exciting?
I don't have much, I just, since October first, we've gone to two EMS calls on the north side of the tracks. And been asked to assist Lake Forest on the south side a couple of times too, so, so far, it's going well, we're just ironing out a couple responding issues. They're not even issues, we're just trying to make it as efficient as possible for both departments, so I think it's going really well.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, I noticed that North Chicago was, are we doing Atkinson Road out there? In front of Station Three? Did that cause you guys any trouble? Was there any point where, where you couldn't get in or out?
No, I haven't heard anything about it.
Okay, good, I was hoping that the city of North Chicago would realize they had an operating fire station, and they wouldn't lock you in for a couple of hours.
So, Lake Forest has been a little busier, we've had, since, we started on October one, we've had nine total calls. Two of those were basically a public assist or non-emergent calls, somebody with a door they couldn't open, and a chirping detector. Had one fire alarm, and five ambulance transports, and one ambulance assist. We've been working well, we've been working out the kinks with getting Quinn four sixty-three to back us up, and how we're gonna work on better using them when it's not, when they're not needed, you're not only calling them when it's an advanced life support. Our dispatchers are getting used to that, and we feel like we've got the CAD, all the CAD stuff sorted out. And we did have one issue with a cellular call bouncing to, which had actually worked in our favor, instead of going to county, it bounced right to our dispatch, cause it hit the Lake Bluff Tower. The person didn't know exactly where they were, but our dispatch figured it out, and got the correct people there. It's, like I said, so far, it's been working good, we had, also, wanna update you that our Fire Prevention Bureau has been actively out there, the, all of the local business merchants should be, have been introduced to them, and we've dropped off, asking for information on their alarm system, and their systems in their buildings, not doing any compliance inspections as of yet, we're, we're still gonna work on getting a mutually accepted fire code between the two of us, and, but we just wanna introduce ourselves and say, hey, this is where we're at, and anything they can give us to help out. It did work out very well in our favor, we had a fire alarm at seven hundred Jenkinson, our fire prevention inspector was out, and had a one minute and twenty-two second response time to the fire alarm. So, those things are nice, we look at having those guys out in the community, making it safer here, and it's also, for us, it's a responder on a fire or an ambulance call, they have a jump bag in there, they can do medical, and they also have the radio and lights they can get there, and they can get a size up on any kind of fire scenario, so. Things have been going pretty smoothly, I will get you guys a full report as we get one solid month, so I have data for one month. It's not gonna be the exact same report as Libertyville, cause we track things a little bit differently, but I'm working on that to get you guys a nice report that'll have one month's data, that'll be delivered at the November meeting.
Very good.
Any other questions?
I have two quick things, one for, one for each of you, if I can make this stop making noise. Pete, first off, kudos, thank you, Patrick Gissel came by, had a real nice conversation with him at the restaurant, and I've got my paperwork pretty well filled out here. He suggested that if I had time between now and next year to meet up with him, and he'd walk through it. I'd like to walk through Libertyville at Rogers Nursery, and my shop as well, whenever that works out. So, I think this is great, it's a great start, I think all the businesses are gonna be very happy to see that activity. I was gonna ask from Libertyville on our side, I talked really, really briefly with Rich, do you guys intend on, in that half of Knollwood, going to the fire signs like you've got in Libertyville Fire Protection District? Or do you think that our addresses are, are fine? I, I'm just wondering, cause I don't, I don't know how that all really works.
In the past, have you heard any, any issues with residents?
No, I haven't, I just didn't know now that you...
I think our CAD and the county CAD both recognize five digits and those, it will come up and get both on the CAD map, and it's been very well documented.
The red signs, you don't feel are necessary? Okay, somebody else asked me that, are we gonna get the red signs? And I said, I will ask at the meeting, and the answer is no, because they're not necessary.
Yeah, it's good that, this has come up a number of times in the past, but about the mix of the five-digit and the three slash four-digit addresses, and I think people feel kinda strongly about not wanting to change.
There's no need, yeah.
Yes, that's the...
The CAD can handle it, even with the businesses and that, and, and it's, it's by design, there's no mistake that Patrick Gissel and Josh Hucker might be some guys you've seen up here, they're heavily involved in our Fire Prevention Bureau, and they got a great knowledge of Knollwood, and we're bringing them along with the other guys that might not have as much knowledge, but a friendly face, and somebody, some guys with a real good background here, that, and we know that there's been a lot of businesses that have had no inspections for a long time, we're not coming in saying there's changes, we know there's county code to be followed and that, but it's not gonna be out there to say you must do this, it's more of, here's what we have to offer.
And just so you know, that's exactly what Patrick said, he said, us going through there is really putting together a list of, of, of requests.
Yeah.
That we would like to start to work...
We call it a recommendation, but we would say this would be the best-case scenario, but...
Right, and I, again, he represented you guys absolutely perfectly, and I'll let people know that there's no need for the red Libertyville Fire Protection District signs, so they should not be expecting them.
I actually made a visit to the school and then the Shields Township office, and talked to the director out there, and got some contact information, and she was really interested in a risk watch program. And to be honest with you, I didn't know that school was still active, so I learned a lot, we made sure that the Knox box keys were current, met with the maintenance personnel out there, so, just trying to establish a relationship with both of those offices.
No, that's, that's, that's really good, cause that school is special.
It is.
Especially, so, it's good that you know what's there and how to deal with that. I have another Knox box key too, I got the new key for the restaurant, I've got it in my truck, so whatever it's convenient.
Yeah, I can do that.
I'll meet somebody over there and do that. Okay. Discussion, action, oh, anything else for the chiefs?
No.
Okay. Discussion, action on appraisals from BP Apparatus. These appraisals...
Do you wanna, do you wanna delay consideration until after your discussion of surplus equipment?
Sure, what I was just gonna do was just indicate on the front end of that, that those appraisals were gotten, not right word, they were, they were solicited for us by Chief Seber, who needed an appraisal on his own equipment, which you'll see accidentally mixed in with here, we do not have a Pierce Saber. But this gave the board at least a good idea of the, the value of the equipment. Anybody who'd like a copy of this, you're certainly welcome to get a copy of this.
The one thing I did notice, the utility, the pickup truck wasn't in there, but maybe that's just cause it's nothing special?
Right.
Yeah, we only had them look at the fire apparatus.
Right, and the car wasn't either, I was actually gonna try to go down to CarMax and get an idea for what they've wanted on that, and I think you had something from another...
Yeah, I, I checked on the pickup truck, and the, the price varied somewhere between fourteen-five and sixteen-five. And that's not including the fact that it has lights and siren on that foot on it, it was strictly just the vehicle.
Was somebody interested in that?
I thought at one time, in fact, I've got a call in to Chief Christian in, in Gray's Lake, he said he was interested in it, but I haven't heard back from him yet.
So, anyhow, the appraisals were something you could hold in your hand and look, and if anybody else wants to see them, you can certainly look at this, if you want a copy of them, ask me, and I'll, if I can make the copy machine work, I'll get you a copy.
The one down here does work, so.
Yeah, I know, it spits at me sometimes, so. Okay, declaration and action of surplus equipment is prepared by, Brian, do you print yours off, Carl, or no?
Oh, the deck was, yeah, I got it.
Yeah. I just brought a bunch. So, based, based on your direction, I'm prepared resolution authorizing, authorizing, declaring certain property, personal property surplus, and authorizing disposition of saying, I took the list that essentially was, that was included in the agenda, put that in the format of a resolution, but the resolution says, this property's surplus, it may be disposed of, I tried to identify in Exhibit A where that equipment list is, how it's going to be disposed of, or at least the concept of disposal at this point. And, and so that's all there.
You know, do you have an extra copy down there?
I do.
I've got it here, and I'm...
Here.
That's all.
So, in, in section two, in section two, the board declares it surplus and section, and, you know, we, we authorize and direct the property to be disposed of by the board trustees, is permitted by law, and staff's permitted by law, and then section three requires an update from time to time on how the property's being disposed of, it's just a follow-up. But, and then, in reality, you only, you only need a copy of this for your files.
Do, when we get our next list of surplus, do we need to do this all over again then? Or do we just present the, the next list?
It probably would be best to do another resolution, and, and just send it to me, and in fact...
Just drop it in.
What you do is you pull off the, you have a new Exhibit A, you have a new resolution number, you have a new Exhibit A.
Okay.
And that's all you do.
Just for clarification for everybody, once we motion and vote on this, as long as we're adhering to fair market value, we can go ahead and dispose of things, correct?
Fair market value, or like, for the, the gear that you're gonna donate to somebody?
Right.
Like, there was some talk about, who was it, College of Lake County, was it?
Yeah, some of the books.
I mean, so, it's permissible, it's permissible to make donations like that too, but...
Well, like your gear to Lake Bluff.
Right. So, so generally, if you're donating it, like, to Lake Bluff for the gear, for the firefighters.
Right.
It's fine to do to another unit of government, College of Lake County, Lake, Lake Fire Department.
The sale of these two lists that we've got here, one from Libertyville and one to Lake Forest, they've both provided me with backup of fair market value of new, with a, in Libertyville's case, it was the cost, the new cost of the equipment, offset with the estimated life expectancy of what was left on the items.
The board should seek, the board should seek reimbursement of fair market value, which is exactly what you said, what was the new cost? What's the expected remaining life expectancy? Because that, the, the property was purchased with district money.
Right. Right. Have you seen this? Does that can be adequate? Have you seen that? Nope, I haven't. Okay, I apologize, here's the one from Lake Forest, I'll shift them back and forth, a quick letter, and then, this is his list, based on what they've, they've got, and what they've found as applicable dollar amounts.
Can you get me a copy of this?
I certainly can, directly after, I will, I'll show you the other one too. I apologize, I thought you had it. I'll pass this down to Brian as well.
Yeah, I think, I think that's fine, the only thing I do is, I think I'd keep a copy of that with your resolution.
Okay.
Just because it, it documents how you, how it was kept, and, and that's what's provided for in the resolution.
Take a look at that one, so we can...
Where's this one? Yeah, and again, I, I, I could just keep this one with that.
Carl would like a copy of these, so right after the meeting, I'm gonna make a copy of both of them, and then I'll give these to Bob to attach to that resolution. Okay, so, you wanna, can I use the resolution so I can read what it is?
Here, I get an extra, I get, I brought, like, five, I brought a bunch of them.
If he has an extra one, if anybody wants a copy of the resolution, you're welcome to grab one after the meeting. Okay, so I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution two zero one eight dash oh five, Resolution of Rockland Fire Protection District, Lake County, Illinois, declaring certain district personal property surplus, and directing disposition, excuse me, of the same. So... Motion by Grum, second. I'll second it. Roll call vote, trustee Snoblen?
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay.
I don't think it's appropriate to do this until the court case has been decided.
Okay. All right, trustee Grum?
Aye.
Trustee Rogers, aye. Okay, do you want me to talk about the two prices of them right now, or just attach these as, as part of it? How do you wanna...
I, I think, I mean, if you're, if you're looking to add on it, I think I would mention that now, pursuant to that authorization in the resolution.
Okay, pursuant to the authorization of the resolution, I have a list from Libertyville Fire Department, again, which there's, there's a copy if somebody wants it, it was put together by Libertyville Fire Department, listing specific equipment, quantities, new value, percent of life left, and current value. The total amount of the surplus items is three thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty cents. We need a motion for that?
No, we, I'll, I'll just include it there, because it's included in the resolution. And in fact, the resolution says, see, attach list, that's why you're gonna attach it.
Okay, and then, the other one is from the city of Lake Forest, from Chief Seber, basically the same thing, going through a list of items from the engines, and additional items that will be useful to Lake Forest in the amount of fifteen sixty-six. That's it.
And the radio.
Aren't these on here?
Should be on the list of...
Should be on the list of.
They're not on the list, though. I gave you a separate, uh, I had sent you something a while back with the, the, the radios value. And I thought in my email, I included that for that box of radios and chargers thirteen hundred dollars.
Just, just a minute to find it. And thank you, Pete, for bringing it up. Let me find the radios. I remember the email, but I don't remember much else.
I had a, um, it was an eBay quote.
Yeah, I know, I remember.
And there were a hundred dollars, or I think a hundred and nine dollars a piece.
A hundred and nine dollars a piece.
So, with the loose equipment, there was a charger, um, some other stuff in there in that box. And I figured eleven of them that a fair market value would be thirteen hundred dollars for the whole box.
I was going to say, you've got a Ryan item on the resolution.
Yeah.
Eleven Motorola.
In my email, I addressed it as thirteen hundred.
Is that going to be adequate, Brian, since I can't find his email off the top of my head?
Find the email and append, appended to the resolution, just like you did with the other two.
It would, cause it would be nice if we made them separate, cause the other is attached equipment. Yeah.
And what was, what was the amount again?
Thirteen.
Well, look at the, the email that, um, that I sent you with the list. It just, it addressed the radio. That was, that was sent.
It's included in that email.
Right. Uh, a few different sites have been, looked at the average price for the same model Knollwood radio is a hundred and nine dollars. And I believe there's ten of them.
Eleven.
Eleven.
So, is there a total?
Uh, eleven times one oh nine.
But there was also some loose equipment. So, that email that came out with the list of the, the loose equipment on the engine, I referenced that we felt a fair price with the radios and the loose equipment was thirteen hundred dollars. Um, so the total was, uh, twenty-eight sixty-six, I believe.
Okay.
But if we want to put them in separate, that would be good.
Okay, can you just resend that?
Yes.
That email? And then I'll get that to.
It should be attached to the front of that list that had all the loose equipment. It should say, it should reference it. And then it, it was a Word document that had a list.
Right. In fact, would you just send it to trustee Grum, so he can attach it to this? Okay, what else do we need to do on that, Brian? Is that it?
Nothing. I mean, if, if, if Mike, I mean, you know, in the minutes, it will reflect pursuant to that resolution, the following properties will be disposed of with reimbursement to the district of the following fair market values. And I, the equipment at thirty, fifteen sixty-six, the equipment delivery bill at thirty-six fifty-five. And the eleven Motorola portable radios and loose equipment in for thirteen hundred dollars. And I'll just have that in the minutes.
Okay, so we're all good to go on that?
Yes.
Number ten is done. Uh, no, oh, I thought, I thought I heard you move paper. Um, the last is discussion approval of legal disclaimer of the bunker gear, which I have here, which I will bring to Lake Bluff as soon as they sign this. Um, I will get them the, um, twenty sets of bunker gear, or fifteen sets of bunker gear. A little more than that, weren't there?
Twenty.
Just twenty.
Twenty.
Okay, so the resolution for twenty sets of bunker gear and five helmets as surplus equipment.
And that's, that's on your resolution too.
Right, that's on the resolution. But I'm going to get this signed by myself, uh, trustee Grum. And then they can get, uh, chief Graff and village president O'Hara to sign it. And then we can get them the gear, correct?
Sure. I mean, you could transfer them to go. That, that just helps protect the district.
Sure, okay. All right, I will get that to them. Uh, anybody have anything else? Uh, for whoever wants to know next Friday at what?
Four thirty.
Four thirty.
Okay, Friday at four thirty, uh, we have another special meeting next Friday at four thirty. As soon as trustee Grum gets the agenda out, it will be posted. But for those who would like to know, they know now. Uh, with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn at ten thirty-four.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.